Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Before we call the City-County Council meeting this evening to order, I would like to hear from the Metropolitan Youth Orchestra, which has come to play a piece for the council and its guests. The Metropolitan Youth Orchestra is a program of the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra, and we are very grateful for your presence this evening. Well, great thanks to the Metropolitan Youth Orchestra. And I will now call this meeting to order of the City-County Council for Monday, January the 6th, 2020. The first meeting of our four-year term, and I wanted to personally welcome all of the councilors this evening. We will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Adamson. Councilor Adamson.
O Creator, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessing on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Remind us, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, what we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that is the responsibility of everyone to serve the common good of all. Remind us, no matter where we live, everyone, gay or straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh, or atheist, is our neighbor, brothers and sisters in humanity, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, and those who live on the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Grant us all the wisdom and the courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. We pray this in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good, right, and true. Amen. And now, we would like to introduce the color guard to present the colors today. Please join me now in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
We have this evening the Honorable Angela Davis of the Marion Superior Court to give us, in what is a longstanding tradition of the council, an oath of office on the council floor. Judge Davis, would you please step forward and welcome? And councilors, would you please rise?
Good evening. My name is Angela Davis, and I am the judge of Marion Superior Court 16. And with all the councilors, please rise and state after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution
That I support the Constitution.
of the United States and the Constitution -- I'm sorry.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully execute
Faithfully execute.
and impartially discharge
Impartially discharge.
all of my duties
All of my duties.
as a member of the Indianapolis Marion County City-County Council.
As a member of the Indianapolis Marion County City-County Council.
of Indianapolis Marion County, Indiana.
Of Indianapolis Marion County, Indiana.
according to the law
According to the law.
and to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
And I wish you all the luck and wisdom needed to lead our great city in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Judge. Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. Very good. There are 25 councilors present. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor to recognize those with us this evening. I'd like to recognize Post 249, the Commander, Mr. Terrell, the President of Exery, Mrs. Bell. Would you all please stand, please, and be recognized. Post 249. Thank you for gracing this great hall with your presence. Thank you very much for coming.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to introduce and thank you for being here Nathaniel Massey, Senator J.D. Ford, Tiffany, and Jason Fletcher, and someone who's spending her birthday with us today, Andrea Sernich. Thank you.
Counselor Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce to you Reverend Glenn Bradley, another one of the guys from the hood that grew up to be a very good guy. Stand up, Glenn.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize my parents for being here, as well as my aunt. Thank you.
Counselor Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome to our meeting tonight Mr. Earl McCoy from the Devington Neighborhood Association. Mr. McCoy keeps me on my feet, so thank you much.
Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize my Ask Me brother, Michael Torres, who is here today.
Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome from our friends at CICEF, Mr. Clark Collier, as well as a personal welcome and thank you to my husband, Dr. Brian Todd.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge our Pike Township trustee, Annette Johnson, please.
Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge my District 7 constituent and longtime friend, Deb Mullin.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge our Chief for IMPD, Chief Ernest Malone. Please stand up and be recognized.
Counselor Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have recognized Pastor Tim Lindsay of Lifeline Baptist Church. And if I may also, our DPW Director, Dan Parker, who is also one of my constituents.
Counselor Gray. Counselor Ethan Evans.
I'd like to recognize my father as well in the audience, and my parents -- my mom and my sister watching from out of town. So, thank you.
All right, very -- yes. Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to introduce and welcome a longtime friend and fellow employee and colleague of mine, Patrick Grayson Denmark.
All right, very good. Counselors, do I have consent to appoint General Counsel Toei Kim as temporary presiding officer for the purposes of the election of officers? The Chair recognizes Counselor Toei Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is the ratification of council rules and meeting dates. Since this is a new council, we must ratify the rules and meeting dates for 2020. I'll entertain a motion to that effect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is election of officers. The first office for election is President of the Council for 2020. The Chair will now entertain nominations for that position. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Vop Osley for the position of President of the Council.
There's a nomination second for President Osley. Are there any other nominations for President of the Council? Counselor Robinson.
I'd like to close the nominations for President of the Council.
Okay, we have a motion and second to close nominations. If that motion is adopted, the effect will be to reelect President Osley as President of the Council for 2020. So, all those in favor of closing nominations, thereby re-electing President Osley, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, President Osley. The next office for election is Vice President of the Council for 2020. I will now entertain nominations for that position. Counselor Mascari.
I'd like to nominate Zach Adamson for Vice President.
There's a nomination second for Vice President Adamson. Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Council? Yes, Counselor?
I move to close nominations for Vice President.
Okay. There's a motion and second to close nominations. If the motion to close nominations is adopted, the effect will be to reelect Vice President Adamson as Vice President of the Council for 2020. All those in favor of closing nominations, thereby re-electing Vice President Adamson, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Vice President Adamson. The final office for election is Clerk of the Council for 2020. I will now entertain nominations for that position. Sorry. Counselor Evans.
I nominate Sarita Hughes for Clerk of the Council.
There's a nomination second for Clerk Hughes. Are there any other nominations for that position? If not, I will entertain a motion to close nominations. Okay. We have a motion and second to close nominations, so all those in favor of closing nominations, which would elect Clerk Hughes as Clerk of the Council for 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Clerk Hughes. At complete selection of officers, I now relinquish the gavel as temporary presiding officer to President Osley to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Counsel Kim. The next item on our agenda is the certification of caucus leaders. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have received certification with signatures from the Majority Caucus, electing Maggie Lewis as Majority Leader, and from the Minority Caucus, electing Brian Maury as Minority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda, and by the way, congratulations to our majority and minority leaders. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, January 6th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Vop Osley, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City-County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance numbers, 26 through 28, 33 through 35, 37 through 40, and 42 through 45. General ordinance numbers, 66 through 78. Special ordinance numbers, 13 through 15. General resolution numbers, 34 through 38. And special resolution numbers, 41 through 57. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
And the next item on our agenda is the approval of journals for December the 9th, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And this first one is introduced by all councilors, which recognizes the service of IMPD Chief Brian K. Roach. Chief Roach, would you come forward?
City-County Council Special Resolution Number 1, 2020. So, you have the first of the year. A special resolution recognizing the service of IMPD Chief Brian K. Roach. Whereas Brian K. Roach was raised in Indianapolis and graduated in 1989 from Indiana University, Purdue University of Indianapolis, U-I-P-U-Y, or I-U-P-U-Y. Which I know about that. With a degree in political science. And whereas Mr. Roach joined the Indianapolis Police Department, now Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, IMPD, in April 1991, and moved through the ranks with varying positions, starting as a patrol officer, moving to narcotics detective, SWAT team member, and narcotics supervisor. Was promoted to sergeant in 1999, was named administrative assistant to the Assistant Chief of Operations in 2002, promoted then to lieutenant in 2005, major in 2006, and captain in 2008, becoming the Deputy Chief of Administration and
Whereas Brian Roach was named Police Chief for IMPD on January 11th, 2017, having served as the Assistant Chief in 2016, and as interim Deputy Director for the Department of Public Safety since 2015. And whereas Chief Roach has proven himself by streamlining department processes and finding efficiencies resulting in saving significant taxpayer dollars. His leadership has created an atmosphere of cooperation among government and private agencies that has led to better public service and
And whereas, returned to beat policing under Chief Roach's leadership, the department created the Mobile Crisis Assistance Team, which focuses on treating individuals suffering from mental health, and partnered with one cop, one congregation, one precinct, a program that connects faith leaders with officers in areas where houses of worship are located. And whereas
And whereas Chief Roach graduated from the National Executive Institute and the Federal Bureau of Investigation's National Academy, has been awarded two Medals of Valor and the Medal of Merit while serving IMPD, as well as being awarded the Holman Health Achievement Award by the Indiana Public Health Community for being instrumental in Indiana's first law enforcement life-saving -- I'm not even sure, what is that? Naloxone Program for opioid overdose victims in 2015, and the Jake Laird Local Public Service Safety Hero Award in 2016, and the Humanitarian Award by the Indianapolis NAACP, and selected as a champion of diversity for the Indianapolis Minority Business Magazine in 2018. And whereas Chief Roach and his wife Marie, an Indianapolis business owner, have made Indianapolis their home. Together, they have raised son Brian and twin daughters, Madeline and Macy, who have all married and started their own families. Although resigning his position at the end of 2019 to accept a position outside of the police department and city government, Chief Roach continues to be actively involved in the community with young men's programs at his church. Now therefore
Be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes 28-year police veteran Brian K. Roach for his many years of service to the City of Indianapolis and his three years serving as Chief of the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Section 2, the council congratulates Mr. Roach and wishes him continued success in all future endeavors. Section 3, the mayor is invited to joining this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance of IC 363-4-14. The special resolution is sponsored by all councils. Mr. President, I shall move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Back to the Speaker.
Mr. President, at this time, if it will be okay, we as a body thought it was important to honor a man who has given so many years of dedication of his life and his family, has shared him with our city, and he's tried really hard these last years and been in the trenches, I know he has in my area, who has one of the highest crime
the trenches, I know he has, in my area, who has one of the highest crime districts in the city, I know. And Chief Roach, we just want to do something, come on up here, to thank you. As a small token of our appreciation as a city, as a council, to say thank you for your service and your dedication to our city and our citizens and our constituents. And we just want to say thank you on behalf of, if we can, Mr. President, allow him to say a few words.
Please.
Thank you, at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Will just be a few words. Thank you, it's been, it's been a great opportunity and an honor to be within the Police Department and also to lead that Police Department. This is a great city, you have a great Police Department. It's been a pleasure to work with, I know a lot of you are new, but many of you I know and have worked with over the years, not just as chief, but prior to that. You've always had public safety, it's been first, you've always come together no matter what the parties are, and we've always felt as a department that you care about us. We understand that money is tight, but you always seem to come up with things that we need as a department. For those of you that are, that are new, public service is great. I congratulate you and hope that you keep in mind that everything you do is important and realize that people look at you, and those things that you do, especially around the Police Department, saves lives. So, so thank you, thank you. Counselor Gray.
Chief Roach, Chief Roach. You know, it makes me seem like I'm really getting old, because I can remember when Chief Roach was just a rookie, and now he watched him grow through the department, and I think he made a fine example for all the young officers coming behind him. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 11, which recognizes Pastor Frank Alexander.
If you're here to support this resolution, you can come on down here with us. Thank you, Mr. President. It is an honor to recognize somebody in our community who has had so much influence and had so much of a positive influence on our community that the name is known across the city. And so it is an honor for me to introduce City County Special Resolution Number 2, 2020, a special resolution recognizing Pastor Frank Alexander. Whereas Pastor Frank Alexander was born on June 21, 1943, to Elijah Alexander and Annie B. Galden Alexander. His early education was Live Oak Elementary School in Ruston, Louisiana. Frank's family moved to Fort Worth, Texas when he was 10 years old, and when he eventually graduated from I.M. Terrell High School in Fort Worth, Texas. And whereas, as a boy, he often re-preached the Sunday sermon he had just heard. His first pulpit was following a flowering tree in his front yard. By age 13, his preaching had expanded to conducting funeral services for birds and animals, including a pig. And whereas...
Whereas throughout his teenage years, Alexander, Reverend Alexander, spent his extracurricular time in church activities. He was a frequent speaker to youth groups. Occasionally, he participated in activities at Bethlehem Community Center, a ministry of the Methodist Church. While spending time with the center director, who was a missionary, Frank developed an interest in missions, and whereas, the pool of missions led him to attend and graduate from Bishop College in Dallas, Texas. He answered the call to ministry on a summer night in 1964, at the age of 21. His first public sermon was taken from the Book of Hebrews and was titled, "A New Covenant." He preached it at Zion Rest Baptist Church in August of 1965. And whereas...
Whereas Frank's first job after graduation was an employment opportunity with Job Corps in Indiana. While working there, he attended the Southern Baptist Theological Seminary. He left the Job Corps in 1969 to become the Director of Gateway Christian Center in Muncie, Indiana, where he met and united in holy matrimony with Shirley Moody. For the next five years, he worked tirelessly, serving as administrator for fundraising and Director of the Youth Center and Health Clinic. And in 1974, he was commissioned as missionary by the American Baptist Churches USA and became the Executive Director of Edna Martin Christian Center in Indianapolis. And whereas Pastor Alexander was very active in the Martindale-Brightwood community, to the extent that he was affectionately known as the Mayor of Brightwood. His involvement and dedication was saluted and celebrated by the numerous awards and community recognitions he received for his work. Whereas Pastor Frank Alexander went home to be with the Lord on Tuesday, November 12, 2019. Now therefore...
Be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City County Council recognizes the life and contributions of Pastor Frank Alexander. Section 2, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. And Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the Speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, like I said, it is, it is a special honor to recognize somebody who's had such a positive influence in our city. The Edna Martin Christian Center is such a, an anchor in the Martindale-Brightwood area, and a lot of that had to do with the foundation that Pastor Alexander laid for our community. It's been an honor to represent the district, and as you can see by the showing of people that have come out to honor Pastor Alexander today, he was revered and admired throughout the city of Indianapolis. And so with that, I would like to ask his wife, Mrs. Alexander, to, to say a few words.
Please.
To Councilman Adamson and to all the other councilmen and ladies, thank you so much for this honor. We are very humbled, we are very honored that this august group would recognize Pastor Frank Alexander. We feel very humbled. My family and I, it still hurts, but we are committed, as with the church, to continue the legacy that he started. He was a humble man, a learned man, a great man. At his wake and funeral, I was most honored by the fact that there were Mayor Hogsett came, but yet some of the young men who may have had a little bit too much to drink also straightened themselves up enough to come in and give respect. So we are very humbled by this award. We thank you so very much. But most of all, we are committed to continue the legacy and work, both community-wise and in Africa, that he started. Thank you again so very much.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 12, which recognizes the American Legion Post 249, Ladies Auxiliary.
this room in posting the colors, and we can't thank them enough, can we? Are they here? Yes, they're still here. I'd like to give them a round of, very well done. Thank you all very much. And also, Mr. President, one of 249's members I've ran into several times at Veterans Affairs, he's representing all veterans, not just 249, but he speaks out for the benefit and the well-being of veterans. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Tutu Woods. Thank you very much. He died at the World War Memorial this past November, the 11th day, 11th hour, and 11th month, when the amnesty was signed, was it 1918, is that correct? Correct. So, Mr. President, on this day, January the 6th, I just need a few remarks before I get into the resolution. The auxiliary of Tillman Harpo American Legion Post 249 is the oldest and largest African-American post in the state of Indiana. Located at 2523 Martin Luther King Drive, Indianapolis, Indiana, the National American Legion just recently celebrated its 100th anniversary. Tillman Harpo has celebrated its 82nd anniversary. The auxiliary has been a valuable asset to our men and women who served our nation honorably. Mr. President, I can't say enough, thank you for these men and women of all the auxiliaries, which include Post 249, for putting it on the line, for keeping all of us Americans safe. We can't thank them enough. There are so many that wish that they could be here this evening, but they cannot, for obvious reasons, and many have passed on. So we represent, they represent, all veterans across the country, as well as 249. Mr. President, I'd like to proceed, comments and readings of the resolution. Madam Lewis.
Thank you. A special resolution recognizing the American Legion Post 249 Ladies Auxiliary. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary as a national organization celebrated 100 years in November. Since 1919, the American Legion Auxiliary has been serving, helping, and meeting the needs of our nation's veterans, military, and their families, both here and abroad. Tillman H. Harpo American Legion Auxiliary Unit 249 has been serving the needs of veterans, children, and the community for over 80 years. This year, the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 249 held its annual pink ribbon connection to raise money for cancer research and sponsored a young lady to attend Hoosier Girls State. The Hoosier Girls State Delicate spends a week at Tyrion University to, to learn about government and...
Whereas the unit held a Christmas party for children in the community and sponsored three families for Christmas. One of the families included a veteran who was a single father. The auxiliary supports the aims, purposes, and accomplishments of the American Legion. As a legion family, the auxiliary participated in the Pearl Harbor Memorial Service at Riverside High School, which was formerly the Naval Armory. The ceremony concluded with a wreath toss. After the event, the auxiliary provided a meal for the veterans at Tillman Harpo American Legion Post 249 and...
Whereas Tillman H. Harpo Unit 249 will host the annual 11th District Americanism Dinner in February, where members of the surrounding community are honored for year-round display of patriotism and service. Each year, the auxiliary participates in the distribution of poppies, the memorial flower of the American Legion Auxiliary, in exchange for donation. The poppies are handmade by veterans, and the donations go directly to assist disabled and hospitalized veterans in our community. Tillman H. Harpo Unit 249 supports numerous programs of the American Legion Auxiliary to answer the call of service itself. Now therefore...
Now therefore be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the American Post 249 Auxiliary. Section 2, the Council heartily thanks Post 249 Ladies Auxiliary for their charitable contribution to veterans and their dedicated service to the city of Indianapolis. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by myself, and hopefully, Mr. President, I make a motion for this to be passed.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the Speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge Mr. John Thomas, who graced us with the color guard. Would you please step over here, Mr. Thomas, please? We'll hear a couple of his remarks, and then the commander and the chair president. Thank you.
Well, this was sort of a surprise to me. I am John Thomas, past commander of Post 249, I am now the adjutant. And when I was asked to get this color guard together, it was a little rough, because we got some old folks. And we don't really have a color guard. From now on, we're going to get one. But I'm proud of Post 249. If you don't know where Post 249 is, it's on Martin Luther King. And when you look at the Avenue of the Flags, you will know where Post 249 is. And those flags represent the fallen American Legion and Army personnel who have fallen and have the Medal of Honor. God bless you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Now, now we hear from the current commander, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Terrell.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers, and guests. It's an honor to be here. My name is Marshall Terrell. I'm the commander of Tillman H. Harpo American Legion Post 249. Our organization consists of three houses. The Legion, which are the soldiers, past and present. The auxiliary, which consists of the spouses, mothers, and daughters of soldiers, past and present. The, the sons of Legion are the sons of soldiers. Our mission is to support the soldiers, their families, their children, the community. Auxiliary members are the backbone of, of the support of our organization. This is not my show. This recognition belongs to the hard-working auxiliary members. I will step aside and let their president, Angelique Bell, who is the head of the auxiliary, be acknowledged and recognized. Thank you.
Chairman Bell.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank our color guards for honoring our country as I say hello and greetings from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 249. I would like to thank Counselor Duke Oliver and the members of the City County Council for this heartfelt recognition. We certainly do our work in service of our veterans, in service of them, and not ourselves. Next month, February 2020, our American Legion Auxiliary at the Tillman H. Harpo Unit 249 will host the annual 11th District Americanism Dinner, where members of our surrounding community are honored for year-round patriotism and community service. Additionally, each year, the auxiliary participates in the distribution of the poppies, which is additionally the memorial flower of the American Legion Auxiliary. We are thankful and honored for this recognition, knowing that our service to veterans and their families are the ultimate goal. For God and country, we associate ourselves to this main objective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, that concludes the presentation of this resolution, and I want to thank you all for coming down. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being invited.
Thank you all for your service.
Crimes Against Children Task Force.
I just gave her a button instead of a pen. Thank you, Mr. President. This is City-County Special Resolution Number Four, a special resolution recognizing the Indiana Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Whereas the Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAT Task Force Program, is a national network of 61 coordinated task forces, representing over 4,500 federal, state, and local law enforcement and prosecutorial agencies. And whereas Indiana's ICAT, ICAC Task Force is comprised of the Indiana State Police, Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, and 22 other local agencies affiliated throughout the state. The primary source of cases investigated by the task force come from cyber tips from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And whereas...
Whereas ISP and IMPD work closely together as a part of the Indiana ICAC Task Force to protect children in the Indianapolis metro area. Additionally, the task force works closely with federal partners at the U.S. Secret Service, Federal Bureau of Investigations, and Homeland Security. And whereas the primary source of cases investigated by the task force come from cyber tips from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Law enforcement involved in the task force include analysts, cyber tip coordinators, digital media forensic examiners, and investigators. And whereas...
Whereas Sergeant Jennifer E. Barnes, an Indiana State Police cybercrime investigator assigned to the Indiana Crimes Against Children Task Force, was presented an award by the United States Secret Service for her forensic examination data submissions into the forensic partner reporting system, which is maintained by the United States Secret Service. Sergeant Barnes is a 23-year veteran of the state police, was awarded because her submissions into the FPR system earned her the ranking of 28th nationally. And whereas...
Whereas each year, the National Computer Forensic Institute recognizes the top 50 examiners based upon the data provided to the FPR system. In 2018, there were 1,224 total state and local partner examiners, and out of the total, 757 submitted FPR exam results for credit during the year. And whereas, from January through the end of September 2019, IMPD filed 51 state cases, and 18 federal arrests cases were filed. In addition, more than 20 children were identified and rescued as victims of child exploitation. Now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes Indiana ICAC Task Force. Section two, the council congratulates the Indiana ICAC Task Force for its notable achievements and wishes continued success in all future endeavors. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature, which he has done. And I so move, Mr. President.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, it's a priority, I think, for all of us here to, as I mentioned in the opening remarks, to protect those among us who are the most vulnerable. And that certainly does include the children of our community. And so I would like to ask Jennifer Barnes to come up and say a few words on this matter.
Please.
Thank you for this recognition of the Indiana Crimes Against Children Task Force and our efforts to prevent the exploitation of children online. This is an extraordinary group of people on the task force, and particularly unique for their inter-agency collaboration that you don't often see in many areas of the country. As noted in the statistics mentioned in the resolution, the Indiana State Police and the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, along with our federal partners, have been very successful in protecting and rescuing children in Indianapolis and across the state, and bringing offenders to justice. It is a team effort, and we are honored to be here today to accept the recognition on behalf of the task force. Not everyone was available to attend tonight, but I'd like to introduce some that are here. We have Sergeant Grant Melton from IMPD, Detective Laura Smith, IMPD, Detective Mark Barnett, IMPD, Detective Darren O'Dear, IMPD. We have Officer LaShel Mara from Martinsville Police Department, and we have also criminal analyst Keisha Ricketts from the Indiana State Police. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one, 2020, introduced by Councilors Barth, Adamson, Potts, Boots, McCormick, Brown, and Carlino, referred to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, establishes a study commissioned to, one, review the status of the city's response to climate change, including the implementation of the Thrive Indianapolis Plan; two, recommend any needed council proposals to advance the priorities of the Thrive Indianapolis Plan; and three, gather information from environmental experts and community members to recommend additional policy changes to advance the cause of sustainability and resilience for Indianapolis. Proposals numbers 13 and 14 refer to the Public Safety Committee and were introduced by Counsel Robinson. Proposal number 13, 2020, reappoints Gregory A. Stowers, Jr., to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 14, 2020, reappoints Mark Webster to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal numbers 15 and 16 refer to the Public Works Committee and were introduced by Counsel Adamson. Proposal number 15, 2020, reappoints Dr. Henry Fernandez to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number 16, 2020, reappoints Henry Williams to the Board of Public Works. Proposal numbers 17 through 23 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were introduced by Counsel Lewis. Proposal number 17, 2020, reappoints Rodrick Bohannon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division One. Proposal number 18, 2020, reappoints Brian Robinson to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division One. Proposal number 19, 2020, reappoints Mary Kelly to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Two. Proposal number 20, 2020, reappoints Mark Young to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Two. Proposal number 21, 2020, reappoints Craig Van Dalen to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Three. Proposal number 22, 2020, reappoints Janice Golson Dunlap to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Three. Proposal number 23, 2020, appoints Ron Hampton to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals to serve as an alternate. Proposal number 25, 2020, introduced by Counselor Gray and referred to the Municipal Corporations Committee, excuse me, reappoints Brett Forhees to the Indianapolis Airport Authority Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal numbers three through nine are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on December 13th and 26th, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Counsel Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that proposal number eight, 2020, rezoning case 2019, Zone 113, located at 7,600 and 7,602 Pendleton Pike and 4326, 4327 Sellers Street, be scheduled for a hearing before this council at its next regular meeting on January 27, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., and that the general counsel read the announcement of such hearing and enter same in the minutes of this meeting.
Is there a second? We will now take a voice vote on the request for Counsel Graves. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. We'll proceed then for discussion from Counselor Toa Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. This council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition number 2019 ZO1113, council proposal number eight, 2020, at its next regular meeting on Monday, January 27, 2020. Such meeting to convene at 7:00 p.m. in these council chambers in the City-County Building. This petition proposes to rezone 4.27 acres from the C4, MU1, and I3 districts to the C4, MU1, and I3 district to provide for office, warehouse, distribution flex space with onsite fabrication. Written objections that are filed with the clerk of the council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued from time to time as found necessary by the council. This concludes the announcement of a public hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Kim. Does anyone wish to call down any of the other proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposals outside of proposal number eight will pass into law. Proposal number 10 is rezoning ordinance as certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on December 26, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposal will stand as denied. There is no business under Special Orders Public Hearing, there is no business under Special Orders Unfinished Business, and there is no business under Special Orders Final In addition, there is no business under Special Service District Councils, and no business under New Business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counselor Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by Counselor Osley, in memory of Reginald Hayes, Henry Naylor, Robert Jackson, and Brownell Payne, by Counselors Holliday, Maury, Anay, Dilk, and Hart, in memory of David Coats and Charles H. Cardwell, by Counselor Holliday, in memory of Deborah Farner-Nethercot, by Counselor Anay, in memory of Santina M. Gallimore, by Counselor Johnson, in memory of Iri Elizabeth O'Shea and Alan Baker, by Counselor Mascari, in memory of Dave Heldman. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City-County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councilors. I further request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body, and a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.